Call to order the meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And we'll begin our meeting as is customary with an observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Before we begin our agenda, this is the time for public comment. So if you have a comment and you'd like to move up to the front or you'd stand where you are.
This is about as brief as you could ever get. A meeting to be able to talk.
Just introduce yourself and say your address.
My name is Edwin Salada, S-A-L-A-D-A. I live in South Lebanon Township, 357 Homestead Drive. I didn't come here with an axe to grind as a very friendly group. I don't even know what party you represent. I said to Mr. Ames, Commissioner Ames, as long as county government or any government seems to run smoothly, who pays much attention to it? I don't. If your taxes get out of control, then you start paying attention. Anyway, I made a call to the courthouse two days ago. I've been trying for the last several months to find somebody in Pennsylvania government or county government that could help me look at my trees that I have in my yard, which are three beautiful hemlocks, that seem to have a disease. It sounds pretty simple. I used to be able to call the county agent. County agent would probably come out, take a look, and tell you what to do. That was in the old days. That was when I lived in Bucks County. So I've been pursuing this with Penn State University, and I've written emails, and finally got a telephone number to call. I call that number, happened to be the courthouse. First you press 1 if you want to talk to somebody in the judicial branch, press 2 if you want to come on ju-- okay, that's a start. That's a start of the queue. My suggestion is, as a friendly way to deal with the county people that live here, is to have somebody that actually answers the phone. I went through the litany of all of these extensions, didn't hear anything that applied to me. I thought, I must have missed it. But I can listen to them again. It's just ridiculous. I called the county commissioner's office. I think I got your se-- I got some secretary. Told him what I'd wanted. Oh, you want another building out there along Rick Rockery Road out there? Which I called, and I got to run around there as well. I never get to talk to the person I wanted to talk to. Somebody's busy, whatever. But I said to the young woman, I think it was on the phone, the secretary, I said, please pass this on to the commissioners. Would you please consider hiring somebody, or maybe even a volunteer, to answer the phone? I'm not anti-technology. Although it's difficult. Maybe you've got fire sticks, or you've got UMO, or you've got whatever you've got. Unless you've got a kid that lives near you. You know, you're going to struggle with technology, and I do too. But this is a simple thing. Press 4441 if you want someone, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Please, consider a person. If you're a handicapped person that has to sit down all day, in a wheelchair, be happy to do something productive in life instead of just getting a check at the end of the month. I don't know what it would cost.
For wellness.
Maybe there's even senior volunteers that do this. It may even cost you money to change your technology, to go back to have somebody that sits there actually and pushes buttons. I don't know. But I'm just saying, if I call Comcast, or I call any big business, I get the same thing. It drives me insane. And maybe it does you too, it's just not, it's just not right. We're going in the wrong direction.
Talk about technology, they're good.
It's not all bad. There's a lot of things making our lives a lot better.
Here's a complete list of direct dial phone numbers.
Thank you.
It's on the front page of the website, too. And I know that's not a substitute, but I thought it might help you.
It isn't. It isn't. There's people that can't go to a website. A lot of people. There's an older gen-- there's an older citizenship in this country. We're all getting older. And there's people that don't have access and don't-- but thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know where I'll put this at home. I know--
In your phone book. Then it's handedly available.
Does anybody look at the phone book lately? Have you looked at the phone book that you get for free?
Yeah, that was--
It's so minuscule.
Yeah.
It's worthless. It's worthless.
Magnifying light, I don't think it works.
I would say, I agree with you, and I would advocate for that. Even if it were somebody during peak hours, something as a start to-- because the public, a lot of them calling in don't know what department they need.
Have no ideas.
Because it's the first time they've ever tried to get help from--
Wouldn't you think the county agent is in the county courthouse? I thought it was, but I didn't know. It's not working that way. I have one more, just one more item. And it may not pertain to Lebanon County. I came from Scoobal County. I'm a coal cracker originally. And that's part of Appalachia out there. A decaying part of the world. Nothing has changed in the last 65 years since I left. Except I look at cemeteries. Cemeteries are a disgrace to this nation, that we as a people would let them deteriorate. Like, if you go up and drive through those, well, what's the problem? Well, churches, church attendance is down. They either don't have enough bodies anymore to take care of their cemeteries, or they're maybe even public cemeteries. I don't know. I don't know if Lebanon County has the same problem, but if they do, consider again how to keep those, how to help these cemeteries keep, be kept clean. Whether it's people from the jail that get room and board for free for six to eight months or whatever, low penalty guys, guys that you can trust to go out and do this work. So I don't know if you have that problem, but if you do, I haven't paid attention, but I thought that I could mention it, because I know there is one cemetery that used to It's in South Lebanon Township. I don't know who owns it, whether it was an Amish cemetery or not, but it's a total ruin. Anyway, that's my comment today. I hope you will consider both of the issues, especially the first one.
Thank you.
Mr. Salada, just--
Yes, sir.
I'm perfectly in agreement with you. There's nothing more frustrating than calling and getting a menu of 30 items and try to remember, did I miss something or whatever? So I'm perfectly in agreement with that. And I know we have struggled with that possibility, and of course, budget is an item, and we've talked about volunteers, so it is something that's still on the table. As regards your issue with the trees, I serve as the director on the Conservation District Board. I have a meeting at lunchtime today in that building. If you leave your name and telephone number with Christine out there, I'll be happy to take that along and have someone call you.
There's somebody supposed to call me in a week.
Well, I'll get you a call today.
What a deal.
And that's, the right place was the extension office out at the Rockery Road. That's the correct place, but Penn State has. Your reference to a county agent is long gone. It's a shared, it's shared among counties now, and that's why you're probably told next week, because that's the week or the day or whatever the person's going to be spending 11 in, and so that's--
Yeah, he won't be back for a week.
Yeah.
Okay, so things change, you know, and I'm outmoded on age here. And that's true, but the issue of the queuing sequence, that the county offices are here, I made the wrong call to the wrong place.
I understand that part. I just wanted to make sure, you got to the right building, you know?
Got to the right building. I'm not sure whether my trees are going to die anyway, but I will leave my name--
Take me up on my offer, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
And I might even have someone from the Conservation District call you who's knowledgeable in trees.
There's got to be somebody.
Oh, yeah.
Have you ever seen the budget, or ever seen the payroll for Pennsylvania, the highest-paid people in the state?
Well, some of them, according to the newspaper, are the correctional officers at the prisons.
I don't know how that happened, but anyway, that's another day. It's another day.
Mr. Salada--
That's a bigger complaint.
I just wanted to let you know that once in a while, we do get a cemetery that's in disrepair, but we have such a vigilant group of citizenry, and we had two guys get together and do photo documentation, and it was a for-profit entity, and they approached them, and indeed, they got action. And it was just a wonderful thing to see. So, yes, we do take pride in our cemeteries, and the constituency, the government can't do everything for everyone.
Of course not.
And in this case, the constituency rose up and demanded action, and they got it. It was wonderful.
Well, these are two really different counties. I mean, I didn't know, when I lived in Scoobal County, I didn't know what was down here in Lebanon County. I didn't know it was a Bethlehem Steel Town. I didn't know. I didn't know nothing, really. But I go back there now because I still have family there, and I look at cemeteries, and what a shame. In the United States, we get people that are sitting in jail, or whatever, which you've probably heard this a million times, but we could use some labor out there to keep these things going. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you for your interest. We appreciate it.
Come back anytime.
Thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to the--
Now, back to business.
Two of the minutes. Please be--
Make a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any comment or question? Are you none or in favor of the motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now, we have Dawn or Sally.
Okay, we started out with a cash balance of $1,463,910.39. A receipt for November 14th through 15th were $2,782,902.60. A total cash of $4,246,812.99. Minus our expenditures of $3,508,585.93. Minus our tax claim of $16,732.75. Leaving us with a cash balance of $721,494.31.
Not $721.
Move to approve the treacherous report.
It's been moved in second. Any comment or question? None in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, good.
Shall you just direct it through your census? I am Jake, Human Resources's Assistant. Personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Jessica Ruppert, General Clerk, A. Floater, termination effective November 14th. Matthew Lewis, Telecommunicator, resignation effective October 28th. Beth Smith, Full-Time LPN, resignation effective November 1st. David Lehman, Casual and Full-Time Correctional Officer, removal effective November 6th.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations as presented?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Are you none or in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Moving on to changes of status, transfers and promotions. Asia Kerr, Change of Status from Court Reporter/Intern in the Courts Department to Court Reporter at the rate of $1,303 by weekly, effective November 20th. Tanya Ziegler, Change of Status from Secretary B in the District Attorney's Office to Secretary B in the District Attorney's Detective Unit, no change in her rate, effective November 20th. Aubrey Bowman, Change of Status from Team Clerk in Domestic Relations to General Clerk A. Floater in Domestic Relations at the rate of $991.90 by weekly, effective December 4th. Starr Brubaker, Change of Status from Docket Specialist in Domestic Relations to Team Clerk in Domestic Relations at the rate of $886.87 by weekly, effective December 4th. Christopher Frye, Promotion from Probation Officer 1, probation services to probation officer 3, field supervisor, at the rate of $1,941.22 by weekly, effective November 20th. Travis Smart, Promotion from Probation Officer 2 at probation services to probation officer 1, at the rate of $1,746.77 by weekly, effective November 20th.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any approve those changes? Any question or comment? Are you none or in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Moving on to other transactions. I have motion to approve Children and Youth Administrator James Holter's request to create an account in one position within the Children and Youth Department, have agreed a living on a nine-year salary chart, 37.5 hours per week. This request is to satisfy a recommendation from an audit conductive to the law.
Make a motion to approve the transaction as presented?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any approve Mr. Holter's request? Any question or comment? Are you none or in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Children and Youth would like to hire Lisa Ahmend as a accountee 1, at the rate of $1,273.21 by weekly, effective November 27th. President Judge Tewaw would like to hire Cynthia Luke Morgan as a law clerk, at the rate of $1,505.79 by weekly, effective November 20th. District Attorney would like to hire Jeffrey Jopz as a central booking agent, at the rate of $12.41 per hour, effective November 26th. An EMA would like to hire the following two as telecommunicators, at the rate of $15.32 per hour, both affected November 27th, Dakota Fulmer and Dylan Schell.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any approve those transactions? Any questions or comment? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board. Motion to approve all the transactions previously read, plus the following. Leslie Stewart, New Hire, Part-Time Court Clerk in the Court Courts, Change in Start Date to November 20th, 2017. And Taylor Eckert, New Hire, Telecommunicator EMA, Change in Start Date to November 27th.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any approve those hirings or changes of date? Any question or comment? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Mandated conference seminar. Christine Harris and Janet Ross from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the PDA in Harrisburg, December 12th through the 15th, with Mileage Meals Parking and Tools Reimbursement mandated by PDA. Daniel Seigman, Ted Conley, Carl Stumpf, Mike Keener, Carrie Wensler and Tanya Kip from the Assessment Office would like to attend the South Central Chapter AAPE Meeting in Gottesburg, December 1st. Mileage Meals, Tools, Reimbursement through Credits mandated by Department of State. Robert Gambler from Children and Youth would like to attend the following three trainings. Using Interactive Helping Skills to Achieve Lasting Change in Mechanicsburg, December 13th, 14th and 15th, with Mileage Parking and Tools Reimbursement, 18 credits mandated by DHS. Introduction to the PHL Welfare System in Mechanicsburg, November 30th. Mileage Parking, Tools, Reimbursement, 6 credits mandated by DHS. Identifying Child Abuse and Neglect in Mechanicsburg, December 6th and 7th, with Mileage Parking and Tools Reimbursement, 12 credits mandated by DHS. And Taylor Stein-Snyder from Children and Youth would also like to attend the following three trainings. The Risk Assessment in Mechanicsburg, December 7th and 8th, Mileage Parking and Tools Reimbursement, 12 credits mandated by DHS. Case Planning for Families in Mechanicsburg, December 13th and 14th, Mileage Parking and Tools, 12 credits mandated by DHS. And the Court Process in Mechanicsburg, December 15th, Mileage Parking and Tools, 6 credits mandated by DHS. Marjorie Olber from Children and Youth would like to attend the Applying Ages and Stages, Instruments and Child Wealth Federal Practice in Mechanicsburg, December 19th, Mileage Meals, Tools Reimbursement, 6 credits mandated by DHS. Michael DePaola from the District Attorney's Office to the Coast Bureau would like to attend the JNET Conference User Group Meeting at State College, December 13th and 14th, with Lodging and Meals mandated by JNET. Daniel Gray and Brandi Foel from NHIDEI would like to attend the Service Coordination for Early Intervention Considering Cockleader and Plant for Their Children in Harrisburg, December 6th, Mileage Meals Reimbursement, 5 credits mandated by Ogdell. Sally Berry and Audrey Ruckow from Probation Services would like to attend the PA Chiefs Association General Meeting at State College, December 7th and 8th, Lodging and Meals Reimbursement, 7 credits mandated by PBPP. Steve Menza from Probation Services would like to attend the Autism Spectrum Disorders Versus Paraphiliac Disorder in Harrisburg, December 1st, Meals Reimbursement, 6 credits mandated by PBPP. And Carla Arnold, Susan Putt and Jody Little from Probation Services would like to attend One Day at BAM's Training for Excel in Lancaster, December 20th, $297 total registration fee with Meals Reimbursement, 6 credits mandated by PBPP.
Make a motion to approve attendance at the mandated conferences as read?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comment? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under requested, Hilda Vreen, Chris Sides and Marie Dallery from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the AAAE Financial Training in Hershey, November 30th, $225 total registration fee with Mileage Meals, Parking and Tools Reimbursement.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any approve that requested conference from AAA. Any question or comment? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Happy Thursday. Good. I'm here this morning. Obviously not Audrey Ruckow. Fortunately couldn't make it. But I'm here to request approval on our modification to the Intermediate Punishment Grant. In a rare occurrence, the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency has announced that we will not be required to reduce our funding for intermediate punishment programs, which include in Lebanon County, our Crossroads Program and the use of electronic monitoring as an alternative to incarceration. And instead, they have allowed us the opportunity to increase funding to that grant. So there are a couple requests for increase in funding. One of them is a $5,575 request to increase a portion of the funding that covers our two probation officers that oversee our intermediate punishment programming. A second one is to increase our funding in the area of operational expenses. That includes an officer's use of cell phone, and that's at $850. And then, so that's a total of $6,425. There's an additional modification request that does not include an increase to the budget, but it includes the expansion of eligible offenders that we move into our Crossroads Program. So initially, the program was limited to our Level 3 and 4 offenders per the Sensitivity Guideline Commission. The first, about, through the first year of the grant, about halfway through, they allowed us the ability to expand it to our Level 2 offenders. And that's important for the county, because the Level 2 offenders are the offenders that would be going to the county prison. So Level 3 and 4 offenders are diverting them from the state prison, but our Level 2 offenders are diverting directly from our county prison. So that's important for us. They've extended that ability to do that into the second year of the grant, and that's what we're asking them to do.
Can you all be handled with one motion, Jamie, Sally?
It's one modification request. It's not three separate. I just wanted to include everything that was--
All right, then I make a motion that we accept the modification request as presented by Director Barry.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Only comment, this has come a long way from the roller coaster of a couple months ago. So that's a good happy ending to our, at least, with the funding part.
Is it constant roller coaster with that IP funding? Well, this-- I was just going to ask, will this increase the number of people that theoretically we could take out of the prison system locally, because, in other words, it wouldn't be part of the day reporting center numbers? These are additional positions that we would be able to keep from going into the prison? That's a good question. It does not increase our numbers, because we have a bed capacity at the Crossroads Program, and it's probably around, I think it's around 17. But we historically have had some struggles making that 17, believe it or not, number in our full Crossroads Program. So being able to put Level 2 offenders in here is going to help us get to that bed capacity, so we don't lose funding. But they wouldn't be taking a position from day reporting, is the question, I guess, so? Or would they be part of that program as well? Level 2 offenders could potentially be placed in day reporting center, and they also could go into the Crossroads Program. I think the difference is, the Crossroads Program is targeting significant drug and alcohol offenders who would, who really need inpatient treatment, and that's not what day reporting center is. So it would be two separate sets of numbers? Yes. And actually, there's a possibility that we could be putting people into the Crossroads Program, and as a step down from the Crossroads Program, they could be going to day reporting center. Okay, it's possible to do that, yeah.
None in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
I did my best to share some of our conversation today about day reporting center. Just doesn't update too much, just kind of recapping that, like, just where the enrollment is, and what efforts are being made and so on.
Certainly. We have 12 individuals in the day reporting center to date. I met with the Common Peace Court Judges, I believe it was last week, and had an educational session on the appropriate individuals that, for referral, into the day reporting center. And last week, the president judge made the decision to expand referrals to domestic relations. We're currently working with Judge Charles on court order language for the referrals and the logistics of supervision and how that's going to work. I'm not very familiar with domestic relation cases, so this is an education for me, but we will be expanding it to domestic relations. The judge anticipates we will average approximately 12 offenders per month as a buildup until we get to those numbers over the next six months. So that's what we're targeting. Out of the 12 that are in there right now, 10 of them, probation, our department, has referred there as an alternative to incarceration, two of them have been sentenced.
Were the MDTs part of that?
No, sir.
Will they be?
But they can be, right?
I had, held an education session similar to the one that I held with the Common Peace Court Judges several months ago, but respectfully, we haven't had any referrals from the MDTs at this point. And we have had some other referrals from the court. For example, last week, there were three referrals. One of them is a state sentence, one of them is an added county resident, and I believe the third person ended up being eligible for the program, so.
Working through that.
Yep.
Process, okay.
There we are.
Thanks for the update.
Certainly.
Thank you, Sally.
And the, just to clarify, the domestic relations, expansions in domestic relations, those are still individuals who would otherwise have been incarcerated for owing fines or owing their obligations?
Yes, sir.
But instead, they're being diverted there. The difference is that they won't, or may not necessarily complete the programming before they're released, because in those cases, I understand that when they make their financial obligation, they're done. Is that right?
I'm not certain.
Okay.
That's one of the logistics that we're trying to work out, because the idea is that, as we stated previously, you know, our domestic relation population, many of them have the same criminogenic needs that our probation population has. So, you know, if the idea is that we're trying to reduce recidivism across the board, whether it be with the domestic relation cases that keep coming out, one would argue that we need to identify the criminogenic need area that is causing them to continue to come back into domestic relation, and address, like, why can't you keep a job, or, you know, what's going on, whether it's educational, whether it's behavioral, whether it's cognitive thinking. So one would argue that we really should be addressing that and not just saying, okay, well, you have a job now, now we're going to discharge you, and then six months later, we'll back to where we're at, because you can't keep that job.
I guess the question would be, can the court require them to stay in the programming? Is that right?
I think that's where, that's above my--
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I'm not certain. And they may not want to sit in classes all day, and that might be motivation enough to keep them on the straight now. So idealistically, they would be completing programming--
Yeah.
--so that we're not back here again. But legally, can we make them do that? I don't have an answer for that part.
And are your thermostats back up to your baseboards?
We had heat at 8 o'clock last night.
Okay.
Thank you. They're doing a fantastic job, actually. I just ran into them over there, so.
The HVAC is being swapped out all of this week, in one big, sort of, week-long swap, inadvertently disconnected the backup baseboard heat, which is going to be the primary source of heat during the switch, and so there was none for a short time.
Yeah. But it wasn't real cold last night, so nothing should have frozen. No, it was fine. It was good.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it in the finish.
Payoff will be this summer.
The payoff will be this summer.
Yeah, you'll actually have air conditioning on a regular basis.
Well, I have air conditioning in my office. In the summer, honest to God, my office is like 65 degrees in my office.
But you had a lot of downtime, though, with it in recent time.
Well, it's my office because in order to keep the southeast side of the building at 70 degrees in the summertime, they have, it has to, it was having to push, so the basement would be, which is where my office is, would be freezing out, and then upstairs would be a reasonable 70 to 74, so there's.
Yeah, so they're addressing that ducting and balancing and things like that.
That's the second. They said they're gonna do that after Thanksgiving. So this portion, they're actually reconstructing the unit inside right now. This should be done Wednesday of next week. And then after Thanksgiving, they're gonna address the ductwork issue. So, but I'm just very thankful that it's getting done.
Getting there.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Domestic relations spin is, or twist is interesting, so I hope, I hope they can figure that out, because it's true that people are.
We're counting, we're counting that as part of it, yeah.
Too, so.
And the fact that they need to complete the courses in order to come out of it with more talent and, you know, better able to address, so they don't lose something.
Yeah, I know that was, that was one of Sally's and probably PCS's concerns, is you only have them until they pay off.
Yeah, we don't want them to avoid classroom. We want them to complete it so they can get the educational component of it.
All right, ready for the retirement fund? No manager today, it's just the rock star.
Thanksgiving gift?
Analyst.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Michael.
Mr. Phillips indicated that your Thanksgiving gift is if you didn't bring a manager today.
That was a frank thought. Got out there. All right, gentlemen, you may proceed.
Well, thanks for letting us, allowing us the opportunity to come in and give you an update again on the pension. What we wanted to do this morning, this is, obviously, we don't have a manager or analyst or anything like that with us this morning, so I was just gonna kind of give you an update. About a month ago, we had the opportunity, we had our annual meeting in St. Louis where they bring in all kinds of different folks from our back office as well as other different firms, competing firms and so on, just to kind of get different ideas as to what's going on. So I just had some different notes I was gonna reference from that, just kind of read down through some updates with regards to stocks and bonds, and then a little bit with just the overall economy, and then give an update on the pension, and we had some recommendations at the end as well. So I'm gonna kind of read through this, if that's all right, if you have, if you have my head down. But a couple thoughts from when we were out there is asset values, more or less what people's net worths are, are obviously at record highs. The stock market's at record highs as well, and the housing market is back to its 2005 levels, just to kind of give some perspective with that. The International Monetary Fund, or the IMF, a lot of times you hear a reference on maybe the radio or TV, expects global growth to be somewhere around 3.6% this year. The U.S. growth expectations earlier this year were expected to be higher. Those have been a little bit lower than anticipated. However, some of the emerging markets and some of the European growth have been a little bit stronger, so we've seen that overall growth be up again to that 3.6%. With specific, or, excuse me, with regards to the equity portion of the pension account, Washington Crossing, one of the ones that folks that we bring in, Kevin Braun, he was speaking as well, and they expect to see the rate of improvement moderate from the levels where we've been. Investors are, have been seeing better growth and fading risk, and so what happens is those stock prices, specifically in some of those areas, start to get bid up along with some of the corporate bonds. The S and P 500, again, just to kind of give some perspective, is up over 30% since the beginning of last year, the beginning of 2016, and this is a reflection of higher earnings and just improvement in overall growth. Low interest rates have also continued to spur on the growth that we've been seeing. The anticipation of tax reform here in the United States has provided some reason for potential upside. The passage of tax reform package that delivers sizable tax cuts and boosts investments would be a very significant event, both in the economy and the overall investment market. Regarding the fixed income portion with bonds, recently, the Federal Reserve raised interest rates earlier this year, it was two interest rates in March and June, I believe it was. They raised interest rates, and they announced that they would begin to unwind their balance sheet. Both these actions imply a shift of the Federal Reserve away from an ultra dovish stance the bank has maintained for so long. Basically, that simply means they're backing away from their involvement that we've been so used to experiencing in the last decade, quite frankly. All's being equal, continued growth and higher short-term interest rates should eventually weigh on bond prices going forward, and we've talked, and Jeff Dabedak has come in and spoke about that a little bit with C.S. McKee. Some of the other thoughts out there, Confluence and one of the other groups, we had opportunity to sit down and actually meet with some of the specific money managers, the folks that are actually pulling the levers, that are doing the actual buying and selling. Had opportunity to have dinner with them. And inflation outlook remains benign at this point in time, and economic data continues to be modestly positive. Confluence, as well as several other economists that spoke while we were out there, do not anticipate any kind of economic recession in the near future. With regards to potential changes coming at the Federal Reserve, there's been some rumors of whether Fed Chairman Janet Yellen will continue to be in that position. Even with that being the case, expectations toward tightening or increasing of interest rates would still remain constant with that. And then lastly, just the growth and, excuse me, the, this future growth we've been seeing is probably, a lot of that will be coming from international and emerging markets going forward, most likely. So those are just some, kind of a scattering of some different thoughts. Any questions with any of that at all in particular?
I thought Yellen was out. I thought that, I didn't think that was uncertain.
Jay Powell's the nominee, I guess, to be settled, but yeah.
Okay, but his, his approach and his sort of practices are similar to.
Approach to Jay Yellen, yeah. Exactly.
All right, so we'll get to the report here. Before the report, we'll just flip over to the first page here, page one, there on the top left side, there's a combined portfolio. You can see the quarterly numbers there on the top left corner, again, is two and a quarter, 2.25% for the quarter. A year-to-date number, which this is through the end of September, was 6.63%. One-year number of 9.25%, three-year, 5.26%, and then since the beginning of the session was 5.86%. Over to the right for the quarter, we started out the quarter, which is the beginning of July, at $121,192,212. There was withdrawals of a little over $2 million and appreciation of 2.6 million, leading to ending value at the end of the quarter at $121,883,816. Bottom left side, we've always talked about our asset allocation there, and one thing we always reference and try to pull out there is it's showing your equities or your stock portion at 67%. That's actually closer to about 61% right now. In that equity portion, remember, we referenced that the REIT portfolio, that Real Estate Investment Trust portfolio, makes up 5.94%. So when you back that out, again, your actual stock piece of the pension is 61.68%. Fixed income is 28.86%, and then cash is about 2.5% as well. Questions with any of that?
Apple being the second, or second top holding, maybe the first, actually, I can think.
Correct.
Voice is kind of, is one of your.
Correct.
But is that a growing portion of the portfolio? I know Buffett also increased, you know, they fractured half the weight, just took a bigger chunk of Apple over there. Or is that, has it grown in, in our portfolio over time, or is it, is it a result of increasing value?
It's a result of increasing value. I mean, the overall position has been somewhat maintained, or had minor changes, but it has been growing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll just give you some updated numbers here. The performance, just through yesterday, is now at 7.69%. So there's been some growth. We've seen a little bit more volatility here in the last couple weeks, but 7.69% is the return. Fred had mentioned the asset allocation, and that really hasn't changed since the quarter end, so not much to speak about there. But I will mention, and it's gonna go along with our recommendation here, is we are, and have been a little bit full awakened stocks. The investment policy that the board has here takes the upper end of the stock range is 60%, so we're 61, 61.5%. So we'll make some recommendations here in a minute regarding that, as well as some other managers. And we have taken out, I'm sorry, 4,052,942 for the year, as far as withdrawals. Probably agree with that. And then currently, our balance, again, through yesterday, is $122,154,129. Any questions at this point? So, you know, what we've been looking at, we've, we're always looking at our managers, and we've kind of been keeping an eye on a couple of them. Four or some underperformers, what we would consider underperformance. And again, performance isn't everything, it's a big part of what we look at, but we also look at their risk metrics, you know, how are they managing, how much risk are they taking on? Are they getting the return from amount of risk that they're taking on? And so one of the managers is Wedgwood, that we're, we're gonna make a recommendation that kind of terminate that relationship. I think one of the things, they have a fairly concentrated portfolio. When things are good, when they get the picks right, they've done well, and I'd say the last couple years, they have not done as, as well as we think they should, they could or should. We've mentioned a few times in here that Stiefel has a rating system, if you will, for all these money managers, and as of August 23rd, they're starting to put them on a watch. And so it just kind of raised our eyebrows a little bit more and said, maybe it's time to do that. That portfolio has about $12 million in currently. We're gonna suggest that we take $10 million of that and move it to Lake Mason. Same discipline, we have their now as a manager, Lake Mason, but the risk made could certainly differ and improve with Lake Mason. We look at alpha, the alpha frankly, and like, in a, what, in a, Wedgwood rather, is a negative alpha, and I'd have to be positive. Lake Mason is 3.5%. That's a, it's a good alpha. And the shark ratio, they're taking on more risk, Wedgwood is versus Lake. So we're improving the quality of the portfolio, and I feel like right now is the time to do that.
Any motion for that?
You have your policy established, and, you know.
This is all gonna fall.
Forcing the policy, essentially.
Yeah, so we're gonna take $10 million from Wedgwood, move that to Lake Mason, and then the other $2 million to kind of get our allocation back to where the investment policy is, except for the investment.
So it's 7.63 as of yesterday, which is Wagon money, our assumption.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Hopefully we can finish a little higher here before the end of the year, so we can get ahead of it in a little bit.
That's, that's annual, that's to date, year-to-date return. So that's good.
7% is helping us when it comes to making payments for the ARC and things like that, eventually.
Sure. Now, the other recommendation we're gonna make as well is C.S. McKee equity piece has also been lagging. We've talked, we've had Jeff Dabedak in here numerous times, and this is one that we've had a little harder time making a change, because C.S. McKee has been a money manager for the county for a long time. Jamie can probably tell us a lot of things. And we don't make these changes lightly, but they have been lagging. The equity piece definitely has been lagging. And so, again, we look at the, we look under the hood a little bit more at the shark ratio and the alpha, standard deviation and data, and we'd like to make the recommendation of moving $10 million out of C.S. McKee, so give them about $11 million and move that over to Confluence, which is a newer manager that we've had, I've had them for, I think, three, at least several. Two, three years, and they've had a nice track record. I mean, it's, it's been pretty prudent, not taking on the risk right now to get actually better returns than what C.S. McKee was doing.
I didn't believe Wayne was here last quarter as well to present, he was from Confluence.
I don't see them on this list of top securities, yeah, so where are they?
Those are, those are equity holdings.
Those are individual.
Page two.
Page two?
They're probably the managers that are listed down right there.
The first and last case, C.C. L. Allen.
Correct. They have a little bit more of the, the data and the standard deviations.
Confluence.
What about John Hancock's numbers are similar to C.S. McKee's, are you looking at them as well?
We've had them, you know, we're looking at them, they have been doing better to the right, so we're feeling better about them. We can, we can, we'll have, we'll watch this as well for pickup. But I think for right now, I think we've made those changes, we've kind of thrown up the portfolio, changing allocation a little bit, which we need to do. But again, more than just strictly performance, we're looking at how it is getting that performance. We've always had this portfolio, the pension, a little bit more on the defensive side, so not getting any surprises.
What more can you tell us about Confluence Investment? What, I don't remember what they, where they're from, or what their biggest holdings are.
They're based out of St. Louis. They were actually, at one time, they were part of A.G. Edwards, which was another investment firm that was purchased by Mark Cuban, and went during the financial crisis for a couple months. But at that time, Confluence had spun off, or had separated themselves from any firm, so they're just an independent money manager. They're a value manager, so like I mentioned earlier about Wedgwood, the Lake Mason is growth stocks to growth stocks, and with C.S. McKee, that's value stocks. Confluence is also a value manager. So from a 35,000-foot view, nothing's changing in your portfolio with regards to those two changes.
So they're simply saying one to buy and one to sell?
Oh, you're right, yes, that's right.
But we will have the same stocks, that's what I heard.
They, they will probably make some adjustments.
Some adjustments.
They have their whole different management, just philosophy and how they, you know, determine what to hold in their portfolio versus C.S. McKee. And again, C.S. McKee, he's done fine in the portfolio just here lately that they've led. And I've talked to Jeff, and Jeff Dabedak, that is, and, you know, he's recognized it as well, so, you know, that's, it's a positive, it's something that happens as well. Again, just improving the quality of the portfolio and giving it a chance to continue to grow. If you can tell the two performances, it's, Confluence is up about 2.5% in order of the year. Anything else?
9% for the year, I guess.
It'd be nice. Again, ice Christmas.
A mine.
Thank you very much.
Joel and Nora Allen, that's the, that's my, that's my, C.S. McKee.
Yeah. Was he sick, or was it all sudden? Yes, he was quite colorful. He came for the time when he brought donuts at every time.
Yeah, oh, did you know him? A little bit, yeah, yeah, he was Jeff's predecessor, just really outgoing and had everybody, you know, everybody was his friend.
He brought donuts.
See you guys.
I get the blue chair. All right. Morning.
Morning.
All right. I appreciate you taking the time for me today. This is a dream I had last year and I did a small fundraiser for just eleven YMCA on Giving Tuesday. If you're not familiar with it, Giving Tuesday is kind of like you have your Black Friday. You have Small Business Saturday and then you go to Cyber Monday. And then Giving Tuesday is that day to give back. This year, kind of modeling in a miniscule version of the extraordinary give in Lancaster. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, they raised. Probably last year they raised, I think, seven million dollars in one day. And probably this year they'll get ten million dollars. We're hopeful between the five agencies that are going to be involved in this this year to, my goal is to hit five thousand dollars in one day.
Would you just review the five?
The five agencies, the who's are Lebanon County Christian Ministries, Jubilee Ministries, Lebanon Rescue Mission Ministries, Lebanon Valley Family YMCA, and most importantly, the United Way. You'll notice the four up top all have one common there, that Christian principles. And then, but we did want to involve, and I met several times with Kenny on this. And Kenny is on board. Kenny Montejo from the United Way is very excited about this. He does the direction the United Way is going to go next year. So he's very excited to be a part of this. He's behind this one hundred and ten percent. So what we're doing is we're doing kind of a social media blitz. And what we're going to do is challenge everybody to challenge, first of all, them and then for them to challenge their friends to give on that day. To one of those five agencies, can be any one of the five. And what I've asked, contacted Bob and asked is if you would be willing to do a proclamation to try and draw some attention. Our biggest challenge is getting attention to this. And I think you guys can help us with that. I have Mayor Capella doing the same on Tuesday. So, but the way that you'll give is you'll give on each individual website. In Lancaster, they have a foundation with the Board of Trustees and so forth. That's well beyond us. But what we're doing is to keep it simple. You'll go out to each website, individual website to that agency, make a donation for Giving Tuesday. You can also pump the lobby. We'll have someone in the lobby all day long. We're having a remote from Mr. Santora and WLBRWQIC. Jubilee stores, you'll be able to, when you check out, give an excerpt on Giving Tuesday, you can mail a check. And also Kenny's bringing his world famous dip jar in. So you could dip twenty dollars for any agency.
It's a swag.
In, it's just a, I say it's an upside down pencil holder. And you just dip your card in it and it will be preset to twenty dollars. So that's our ways of giving. The time though is a one-day period is what we're looking at. And we're trying to raise, you know, a thousand dollars for each agency. That's my hope.
Do we have, do we have a recent proclamation, Jamie?
No questions?
Sure.
Okay, my question is, I understand United Way is involved, so that kind of answers a question, yet it doesn't. There is a blackout when you, a participant of United Way, can you explain how this does not interfere?
The blackout period ends November fifteenth.
Ah.
So that's how. And if you look at this list, the YMCA and LCCM are agencies currently not United Way.
Okay, well, it's making a little more sense now. I have to catch up.
Jubilee and, and the Rescue Mission, Susan and Ryan are not agencies of the Y, of the United Way.
Sounds like a good mix.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
Unfortunately, just a comment, we're certainly not able to help you in getting the word out since we don't have any media in Lebanon County anymore.
Yeah, I know. That's what I found out.
We thought that LBR would be, they've been.
Gordy's in here, but he had joked that.
Well, you know what? I'm going to challenge you all before I leave to fill out one of these and hold it up and let me take a picture of you. And that'll get posted on our Facebook and nothing, I always say, a good leader always leads by example. And I think all of you are that. I know each of, each of you three personally, and I know you're leaders. I know you'll help me out with this and you'll let me take a picture. You know, you can, you know, everyone, I'm not so concerned about that. This is why, you know, I'm, I'm taking this picture, I'm making my donation separate from it. And the amount of the donation, donation isn't so important. What's important is that you're taking part in it and we're trying to get a part of it. My hope is that someday it grows and it becomes, you know, a little bit larger and so forth. And we get more agencies involved in it. And I think next year after people see it, you know, that they will.
Bob, are you doing this like, I missed that part. You said there is no board of directors or anything. Are you doing this on your own or how, how did you come about this?
After I retired from the bank, I took off for a couple of months, but then I went back to work. Phil Tippin at the Y recruited me. So I'm Development Director for the YMCA. I worked about two and a half days in there for him. And I do all those fundraisers for him. He wanted me, I had been on the board there at the YMCA and actually chaired it a couple of years ago. And that's how it came about.
Okay, so, so then the Y has no problem with all the other organizations as well?
Yeah, Phil's very open to letting me share. I've helped these other people write their radio ads, you know, get their, their items together, how they're going to, you know, market this and so forth. I've helped them with that. He has no problem.
And what day is the day that you want to do?
Giving Tuesday is November twenty-eighth, Tuesday, November twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. Whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give. Whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favored causes, build a stronger community and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the county of Lebanon. Whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of County of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim November twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen as Giving Tuesday in the County of Lebanon and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful.
Motion. Make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved. Capital proclamation and, do you have a press release or anything for, for?
That I can get you.
Well, it would be for me, but I mean, to get directly to the news and to.
Yes, oh yeah, I have that prepared already.
Did you get someone to take a photo of us presenting the proclamation?
And what I would, and what I will do with that also is I'm going to put, put that in a frame and I'll put that in the lobby on our, on our remote broadcast. And it will be brought up.
Okay.
If you want to hang out just for a few minutes for the photos, you can.
Just to finish up publicly.
Okay. You gave me shivers though when I came in, I heard all that return on asset stuff and stuff.
Flashback.
Took me to the flashback. Don't like how to tie back on it. Thank you.
All right, I've got just four things left. Got appointments to the Conservation District Board. And I had forwarded to you three applications for Hotel Tax grant that might be considered today if you would. First nominees and our appointments to the Conservation District. As you know, as a reminder, we, we sent out nomination forms to various identified nominating organizations throughout the county, which are established by, by the Commonwealth as to who we're to solicit for nominations. And we, let's see, we got four, five, five nominations. Five nominee organizations responded, which is a pretty good response really. And I'll read those off and we provided copies of nominations as well, but for the most part. Calvin Miller as a former director and Robert Arnold as a public director. Are nominated by all five organizations as their first choice. The only thing different would be if you had to go to the second choice, the Association Township Supervisors nominated Dawn Blount for second choice on both farmer and public director. So.
I'll make a motion.
No.
I'll make a motion to nominate Calvin Miller as the former director and Bob Arnold as the public director to the Conservation District Board.
Now, second that motion, they're both very good members on that board.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved.
All right, I'll take care of the notification. And then I have three applications for Hotel Tax. And they, they all came in very recently here. And I'll do them chronological or I'll just read through them first and then you can let me know what your wishes might be. First, the Lebanon Rotary Club Foundation is requesting a grant of five thousand dollars for sponsorship of the Bologna Fest and Winter Carnival at the Lebanon Expo Center. Their total project for that event is forty thousand dollars. It says in its eighth year, they attract visitors from all over central Pennsylvania, celebrate the county's principal beef product, Lebanon Bologna, promote other things that go along with Lebanon Bologna. Proceeds of the event are used to support Rotary's mission and beneficiaries that receive fifty percent of the proceeds. They're seeking five thousand dollars for marketing and promotional advertising such as radio, billboard, print and online. And they attached a brochure, which I think you had about the Bologna Fest. The second one is from.
Do you want to move it?
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
I would make the motion for the Rotary, but I would like, I would only like to do twenty-five hundred. This thing's been established, one going. And, you know, actually the offer was made to the DMO to share in, in sponsoring and working this thing with the promise that the DMO could probably make twenty thousand dollars out of the deal. We turned it down, but I don't understand now after all these years, all of a sudden need for a big influx of money. So, you know, I would, I would like to give them something, but I, I have an issue with five thousand. That's just my position and then, you know.
Thoughts?
Well, I think that they do a wonderful thing. It's at a time of year when there's nothing else to do. And I see families and children out there and it's a really nice event in the middle of winter, basically. Sure we can up that amount a little bit?
I mean, I'm, I'm not the one that decides this personally.
What's your name, the motion? I didn't know if you had.
Again, I, well, if you have something else in mind other than the five thousand.
Can we do thirty-five hundred?
I'm okay. I'll amend my motion to thirty-five hundred.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved.
John, we work well together.
That's a first.
Very magical.
It's a shame the press isn't here.
That's probably why it's. Go ahead.
All right, next one is a request from the Friends of the Union Canal Tunnel Park, which is a committee of the Lebanon County Historical Society. They're requesting six hundred and fifty dollars to be used for marketing to, in partnership with Lebanon Valley College across country team. They draw visitors to Union Canal Tunnel Park from as far away as Pittsburgh. The one complaint they get consistently is that once the teams get to Lebanon County, they can't find the park. By the way, it doesn't explicitly mention, but it's, that is the location for an invitational tournament.
It's big.
They may be assuming that, that you know that. But anyway, they place signs throughout the parking area on, and up near Tunnel Hill Road. Most cars are directed through GPS, but it's still confusing once they get there. They're hoping to add tourist-oriented directional signage that will help guide those from out of town to the area. Their total project is eight hundred dollars. They're asking for six hundred and fifty dollars toward that.
I'll make a motion for the six fifty. I, I see how busy they get, the parking in all of West Lebanon is taken during that tournament. And I also remember when we did the, the thing where the big, the cars came to town and.
Fireball run.
Thank you, the fireball run. And they, the guys, the GPSs don't take you right where you need to go sometimes. So it's, it's a directional sign is in order.
So you made a motion. I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved.
Okay, the last one is submitted by Friends of Coleman Memorial Park, Pamela Giacomo president. And this is for a thousand dollar request toward the Lebanon Kriskindle Market. The past two years they've drawn, according to vendor estimates, approximately a thousand people during the course of the day of their event. Many are from outside of the county. They spend money with local vendors, help support the nonprofit organizations who have booths there. This, the funds being requested would help cover expenses for printing the rack cards that are distributed and also cover the cost of printing signs and, and event and the cost of the vendor tent. I mean, their fifth year, they're more efficient in supply for supply needs. And so they're asking for a lower amount than they have in the past. I think they passed the rest for two thousand.
Yeah, but we only gave a thousand.
But they've asked for two.
They started out with a thousand and then they wanted to increase it. And I did, I, I just struggle a little bit with these because initially when they, they come to us, it's supposed to be seed money. And, you know, from my, my business view, maybe if you have seed money, you should soon become, you know, self-sustaining. But I'll make a motion to give Kriskindle Market a thousand dollars for the Hotel Tax.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so ordered.
That's all I have. I was going to do something with the request for supporting nuclear energy in Pennsylvania, but there's some more, some questions on that. So I'll get back to, to.
Is there a time sensitivity to that or?
I don't think so. It's just sort of a, an effort on their part.
The, the answer to that is the legislature has to act on it. So you know how much time they'll take, so.
And you have assessment appeals this afternoon.
We do. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Your attendance.